Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you're staying, we'll have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the day and for all the many blessings that you have brought upon each of us into the city of Pecosa. We ask that you would join with us here tonight, Lord, in these council chambers as we make the decisions for this city. We just pray, Lord, that you would influence us and our decisions will be in the best interest of those that we serve. And we make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move past our special presentation that was on your agenda. Though, I think the band will be here possibly at our meeting, next meeting in June. So we'll move on to our audience for visitors at this time. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council on any issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you now. Dr. Flynn, welcome back, sir.
Hello, my name is Dr. Charles Flynn. I live in 110 Sandy Bay Drive. I used to come here quite a bit, but found another issue, I guess. What I'm going to bring up is a few comments which probably are pretty disjointed because I'm just getting a partial handle on what's going on. And that's dealing with the FEMA changing the insurance maps and the zoning nomenclature for the different areas of Pecosa as far as flood zones go. I watched, and it's very nice now that how they have the video on of the council meetings, and I went over it two to three times from the meeting two weeks ago, February, or May 10th. And the end of that meeting was taken up with the FEMA proposal of changing the ground rules as far as zoning requirements go, and much more importantly, the building requirements and the insurance rates that are certain to follow. It was a little frightening to watch this, and it was quite confusing, I thought, but I think I was in good company because it seemed like the council was pretty confused by it too, that there's so many unknowns here. One is when they're going to have this final map set up and exactly what the areas are going to be that to be affected in. As far as I know, as of now, these areas are not clearly delineated. Nobody knows where I live right on the water, that's easy, you can call it coastal. But apparently that can be extended inland for quite a distance, and nobody knows how far it'll go and how many homes are going to be affected. And the homes will be affected. It's not only going to be the tax rate, which may be totally unaffordable for many members of the citizenry of Pecosa, but the building requirements, the insurance rates are basically going to skyrocket. At the meeting, it was stated that nobody knows what the insurance companies are going to do, that they have their own way of interpreting. Well, I think we can all say if they change the rules and you're upzoned or downzoned, however you want to put it, that your insurance rates are going to appreciably go up. That may be necessary, but it struck me, and especially Mr. Hunt, who I think really stood up for the citizens, saying, hey, wait a minute FEMA, you're going too fast. Apparently this has been years in the making, and all of a sudden, apparently, they gave a rule that you had 30 days to comment on this. And Gene Hunt said, no, wait a minute, we have to go neighborhood by neighborhood, tell people what's going on. Probably it'll take through the summer. And I believe a request was going to be made for FEMA to put an extension on this wacky deadline they had of 30 days. Other confusing issues were if this is going to be mandated by the feds, FEMA, as to what homes and areas are connected, why does the city council even vote on it? And I don't quite understand that yet, although it was stated that, yes, you can vote no, that if you don't want to change the zoning to this coastal A or B or the different variations, V, I guess. To my way of thinking, as it was stated, that if we vote no, changes won't occur until FEMA comes in with a, I think it was a full-fledged audit, which may take years. Reading through the FIS, the federal flood insurance plan that's in the library and on the web, apparently the last meaningful changes they made was in 1986. And I certainly could wait another 18 years or so, or 24 years. So I highly encourage the council to vote no if this is a reasonable option. It's disjointed, but I just came across this information in the last 48 hours, and I hope it will become clearer as the summer goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn. Always good to see you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the approval of our minutes. Just the regular session, please.
May I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the regular session of May 10th?
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt our regular session minutes from May the 10th, 2010. Any concerns, comments, corrections, additions? None of those, Ms. Diggs?
Certainly. Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Mayor Housler?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Vic. Let's move on to item F. It's a public hearing, the only public hearing that we have tonight. It's an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance. The subject is enlargement and reconstruction of nonconforming commercially zoned buildings. Here's our first reading. Judy, any comments?
I just, that Karen Hall will make the presentation.
Great, hey Karen?
Hi, good evening. Article three, section three dash six of the zoning ordinance allows for enlargement or reconstruction of nonconforming structures and activities which were in existence before enactment of the ordinance. Section three dash six point one addresses the enlargement or reconstruction of nonconforming residential dwellings, however, there's currently no section that addresses commercial structures specifically. So we have composed an additional section, which would be three dash six point two of the zoning ordinance addressing commercially zoned structures that do not meet current front yard setbacks. This section specifies that the structure must be used for commercial purposes and be located within a commercial zoning district, and that the structure cannot be located any closer to the front property line than the existing structure. The purpose of the proposed addition to the zoning ordinance is to streamline the development review process by preventing such requests in commercially zoned areas from having to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for variance, which can slow down the process. Right now, we don't have a lot of redevelopment, but we do anticipate in the future that there will be quite a lot along the With Creek Road corridor. And we'd like to get this in place so that we're ready for when that day comes. I've done a, just an example, this would be a B2 zoned area. The front yard setback requirement in B2 zoning district is 50 feet. However, if, as you see, the existing structure there was located 40 feet, and this was before any of the zoning ordinance requirements took effect, then a structure could be rebuilt or added on to that met that 40-foot setback. It couldn't be any closer than that. This would not allow it to go any closer to the rear or side yard setbacks than is allowed by code. And that means that any adjacent residentially zoned parcels would not be impacted by this zoning change. And then in addition to this, we've added section three dash six point two to the zoning. In addition to adding three dash six point two, we propose to take this opportunity to make three minor changes or corrections to this section of the zoning ordinance. This would be spelling, grammar, kind of thing. Any questions?
Any questions of Karen?
I have one question.
Sure.
Would the, does, does it apply to the side setback as well?
No.
This is only the front setback?
Only the front.
Is there a reason why we are not applying it to the side setback as well? If they want to go deeper along the same side setback?
Some of the, some of the commercially zoned district are adjacent to residentially zoned, and we wouldn't want them to impact a residentially zoned district. So if they wanted to go any closer than is allowed by the ordinance or by the current ordinance, they'd have to go to BZA for that.
I'm not saying go closer, I'm just saying go further, further back away from the street along the same, side, same side setback.
They could go further back if they could meet the backyard, the rear yard setback.
What precipitated this change?
We were looking at the ordinances, and we had considered some of the things we could do to streamline the development review process. This is just a small section of the ordinance, and it's one of the first ones that we looked at, and thinking about the future development that could occur specifically around, along With Creek Road. We did look at individual parcels to see if, you know, any, any kind of impacts, negative impacts could occur by doing this, and saw, saw nothing that would, you know, make us concerned about.
Good. So it makes sense to streamline the requirements, but there's no specific property or property owner that requested this?
Well, there is a parcel, I guess the 7-Eleven is one of them, that would possibly be, would change the configuration of their gas pumps, and this would...
Oh, the Zoom, right, now the 7-Eleven, right.
Yeah, what is now the 7-Eleven.
Zoom 7-Eleven, right.
Yeah. And that could, that could possibly help in a situation like that.
Did they request it, or is this just something that's, that was thought to be a good idea? I'm not arguing it, it's just...
Uh-huh. They, the, the thought process has come up, they have not specifically.
Okay, so it's just a good idea?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Also, I've suggested some changes to three dash six, which is the enlargement on residential, because there have been some changes in the law, that there needs to be some rewrite there. I'm the roadblock there, I haven't rewritten some of those sections yet, and so I'm working on getting that done and getting it secured and put over there. But that part, the other part of revision is my holdup.
Good. Anything we can do to streamline the requirements makes sense.
We're trying to streamline them and make them comply with some recent cases and some recent decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this will also allow 7-Eleven, whether or not Karen, to move forward with the remodeling?
They could, they could potentially move forward with the remodeling, and I did create another slide, just to give you an idea. This is the criteria that the BZA has to look at to do an approval. Probably the, the most difficult one in the commercially zoned area would be the hardship. It would be hard to prove, because their hardship is almost, almost to the point that if they denied it, you'd not be able to use the property. We know that, you know, they've used it for commercial purposes before, so it would be hard to prove that. And then the last, the last bullet there, the frequency of requests, like I said, it's something that, right now, we're not getting a lot of requests for, but we do anticipate that as redevelopment occurs.
And the remodeling of that corner is absolutely nasty to this community.
Okay, any other questions of Karen? All righty, thank you Karen, well done. Okay, let's open the public hearing then, and see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address this ordinance, or the amending of this ordinance. Is there anyone? Okay, and that will close the public hearing, and it is our first reading, so we'll see this, we'll vote, but we'll see it again at our next meeting. So someone prepared with a motion?
We need to go ahead, I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution. Let's see there. And here's a resolution amending the ordinance, of the zoning ordinance by revising Article three, nonconforming uses of structures.
Okay, all right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt that ordinance. Okay, any other concerns, comments? No one, okay, Vic, please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
And Mayor Housler?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Vic. Move on to item G, which is unfinished business. The first item is a resolution making appointments to the school board.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, at the last meeting, we held a public hearing on those persons to be considered for the two appointments tonight. You have an appointment from the Western Precinct and one from the Eastern Precinct, and only those that were named at the last meeting can be considered.
Okay, thank you Judy. Is there someone prepared?
I'd like to, I'm not going to make the motion, but in the Western Precinct seat, I would like to insert the name of Beth Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution making appointments to the school board in the names of Alan L. Melton in the Eastern Precinct, term to expire June 30th, 2013, and Beth Wilson in the Western Precinct, term to expire June 30th, 2013.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion made in second, we adopt the resolution with those names inserted. Are there any other questions or concerns regarding the resolution, the motion? If not, Vic, please.
Certainly. Councilman Seth Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
And Mayor Housler?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Vic. Move on to item H, new business. First item is a resolution declaring certain property a surplus and authorizing their disposal. Ms. Wiggins?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we have some items that are associated with the pool dome that we no longer have any use for, and we're presenting them for your consideration and authorization to dispose of those items. I will say that at the suggestion of Councilwoman Crawford, Dave Callis has contacted the school system and the YMCA to see if there's any need for any of this equipment, and the schools have indicated they, they could use three of the blowers that are on the, on the list, but we haven't heard anything back from the YMCA. So we are making efforts to find someone locally that might could use these items, and what we can't get rid of that way, we will find another means of disposing of them.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution declaring certain city property a surplus to the needs of the city and authorizing their disposal.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments?
I just got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Did we just decide that this was just not a good thing to do? I mean, it's just a few years ago when we bought the dome and put it up, and we had a winter program, it just didn't work out, or what was the deal?
Yes, I believe 2008, that decision was made because of the economic conditions and also the structural integrity of the dome itself, and it continued to underperform at wind speeds of more than 20 miles per hour, so the developer's decision was made at that time.
And I'd also like to just mention, and I'm sure that it would be okay for the city manager to do this if we pass the resolution, that I would like to see at least if there are churches in the neighborhood or civic organizations that might could use the items as well, that they at least have first right of refusal.
Sure.
There, it's a question, there are no plans, whatever, to resurrect the winter swim programs or to advertise to other, you know, to year-round swim teams the possibility of coming here to swim?
At this time, the winter swim program, we have found accommodations outside the city at the former Centerra Hampton Health and Fitness Center, and we're working with the city of Hampton on that, and some other locations as well to meet those needs.
Is this equipment still usable?
The dome itself has structural flaws in it, and it's been brought to my attention that those flaws precluded its use at more than 20 miles per hour, which quite frequently will happen.
That's always been the case, though, hasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And of course, the economic conditions being what they are is also a contributing factor. The operational costs for the dome during, during a season somewhere between $60,000 and $80,000 with electrical, utilities, and part-time staff, and we weren't seeing the revenues, is my understanding, and the reason that that decision was made in 2008.
Has it taken up a lot of space, Dave, to store it?
Not an overly large amount, no, sir.
We spent about $120,000, $150,000?
I believe, yes, sir.
Like five years ago, or something like that? That's as big as kids, oh, sorry. You can't say that, Karen. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money just to throw away in a five-year period. I mean, I, you know, but I guess if there's nobody, you know, who's, you know, that we can't resurrect a program and get outside swim teams that need to swim year-round, I mean, I think five years ago, that was one of the big deals that was a clincher for it, that we had a team...
That was a hot item.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a hot item, Frank, and I think the difference is that at that time, Centerra was operating instead of the Department of Parks and Revenue for the city of Hampton.
Right.
Now, assuming we can regionalize with them, and that within a reasonable distance, at the time, we had to drive all the way to Coast Guard Station, as I recall, for indoor services.
A lot of kids did, yeah.
And Fort Houston.
And a lot of Coast Guard kids came down here to swim, yeah.
And so now, now we just have to drive up on 134, so, whole lot, whole, whole different argument.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions today, if only he's there? Thanks, sir. Okay, any other questions, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the resolution. Ms. Diggs, please.
Certainly. Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall?
Aye.
And Mayor Housler?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thanks, Vic. Item two, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and I should have asked it before.
Correct.
Do we get a chance to look at the bids on something like this before it goes out, you know, for, you know, for sale? I mean, like, if someone came in and said, you know, give you a dollar, can we say, that's not enough money?
Yeah, if you want to be notified, we can.
I mean, because it seems that if we...
Anything wrong with that money? I mean, if somebody comes in and offers a hundred dollars...
It's your resolution. If you want to instruct the city manager how to handle it, you have a right to do that.
Do we need to put it in the resolution, or can we just...
I think when you just say it's...
Do a consensus thing.
Make it a comment at the end of the meeting, that'd be fine. But that, I mean, I just think that, you know...
I'm with you, I understand.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
You don't want it to go somewhere for a dollar, or somebody to, to come in for a dollar and buy 120,000 dollars' worth of equipment. I'm good with that.
Yeah, but I'm happy for the city manager to handle it to the best interest of the city without us writing a resolution as well, so.
Give me a, if you can get 42,000 for it, the couple... Talking toe fees. That'd be great.
All righty, let's, let's see if we can move on to item two now. It's a resolution endorsing the change of name for the Colonial Services Board. Ms. Wiggins?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. David Coe, the executive director of Colonial Services, is here, and he'll explain their request for a name change.
David, welcome.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. One of the reasons, the primary reason we're here is because we are called a little bit of everything. We have agreements and MOUs and MOAs and contracts that refer to us by our original created name, the Colonial Mental Health and Mental Retardation Services Board for Williamsburg, York County, James City County, and Pecosa, which means we carry business cards about this big. We also have agreements listing us as Colonial Services Board and others that list us as the Colonial Community Services Board. What we find in the community is when, when we go around and say, for those that know who we are, that know who the Colonial Services Board is, or they've heard of the name, will say, you know what we do. Very often, the answer is no. Colonial means you're in Virginia, services means you do something, and board means that you have a board, or maybe you are a board or something, but it's, it's unclear. What we're looking to do is to create a name so that if we have new residents to our community, or residents that are not familiar with us, and they look in the phone book, they have a sense of what we do, and they'll be more likely to access us. Also, we're looking for names that may actually open doors for us for some new revenue sources. But that, in a nutshell, that's it. We're looking to reduce confusion, looking to increase access by having a name that describes more of what we do, and hopefully be able, as a result, to serve more residents from Pecosa than our other localities.
Okay, David, thank you. Any questions to David?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Okay, someone prepare with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving the change of name of the Colonial Services Board to the Colonial Behavioral Health.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and multiple seconds that we adopt the resolution. Any other concerns or comments?
Certainly. Councilman Marie?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Housler?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Vic. Item three under new business is a resolution in memory of Roger N. Messier. And before we adopt that, if I could ask, Vic, would you mind reading that, please?
Certainly. Resolution in memory of Roger N. Messier. Whereas Roger N. Messier, a longtime resident of Pecosa, passed away on April the 30th, 2010. And whereas, prior to his death, Roger N. Messier was a very active community leader, serving with distinction on Pecosa City Council from July 1990 to December 31st, 2002, a period of 12 years, during which time he served as vice mayor from July 1996 to December 31st, 2002. And whereas Roger N. Messier served two full terms on the Pecosa School Board from July 1st, 1983 to June 30th, 1989, during which time he was chairman for three years. And whereas Roger N. Messier was a member of the Pecosa Industrial Development Authority from March 28th, 2005 to his passing, and was active in several community organizations to include the Kiwanis and the American Legion Post Number 273, serving as department commander for the state of Virginia of the American Legion and master of ceremonies for the Virginia Boys State that was sponsored by the American Legion. And whereas Roger N. Messier served his country in the U.S. Air Force Korean Conflict for four years, and was a member of the NASA Houston Space Program Team, receiving various awards to include the NASA Exceptional Bravery Award. And whereas Roger N. Messier will long be remembered and respected for his leadership and unselfish devotion to this community and his country. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Pecosa, Virginia, that the death of Roger N. Messier is a distinct loss to the City of Pecosa and City Council, thus hereby express its deepest sympathies and condolences to his family, that his dedication, contributions, influence, and leadership were invaluable, and will be forever remembered by the members of City Council, the community, and city employees, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage, and a framed copy presented to his family in recognition of the high esteem with which he was and still is regarded by all who knew him.
Very good, thank you, Vic, appreciate that. You know, it's, it's, it's just hard for me to understand where folks like Roger, you know, where these folks come from that would do the, do the things and have the accomplishments in his life that he has, and saw fit for one of those to be serving this city. I don't think we could say enough about folks like Roger, it's just, you know, what a, what a great example and what a great ambassador for this city he was, and his family still are ambassadors for this city. And this, this is well done, by the way. Judy and Vic, whoever put that together, it's well done, well done. Okay, someone have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have the honor of making the motion for, to approve the resolution in memory of Roger N. Messier.
Okay, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the resolution. Vic, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Councilman Seth Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
Aye.
And Mayor Housler?
Aye.
Mayor Housler, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Vic, and we'll see them in very near future, I think, right, Judy? Okay, great. Okay, let's move on to our last item under new business is a resolution electing a vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we enter the name of W.E. Hunt, AKA Gene Junior, as the vice mayor of the city of Pecosa.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made in second that we adopt the resolution with Councilman Hunt's name inserted. Okay, any questions and comments?[1738.13]
I have, I have some things. There's several people, I think, on this, this council who are, I think, sufficiently experienced to be vice mayor, and this is something we need to carefully consider. Gene certainly is, is experienced enough. Frank also, and Carrie, I think, are all experienced enough. And I would, I'd like to say that when I do vote on this, it's, it's after a lot of consideration of who would be best for the city, seeing as all three, I think, can do the job, given the amount of experience they have. But I think there's, there's several things that I really look for in a vice mayor. One is participation in, in civic events and being, showing the flag a lot around town. And I think Carrie would meet that requirement, as would, as would Frank. And also, I think that Carrie is, is very well spoken, as is, as is Frank. But Carrie is very well spoken, and I think has, has built up a good rapport outside of the city and has, has not, is very highly, very, very highly admired from the people I have talked to in the town, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have, we have the motion made, and we have a second.
Certainly. Councilman Seth Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Marie?
No.
Councilwoman Crawford?
No.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Hunt?
Aye.
Mayor Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to two.
Okay, thank you, Vic. Congratulations. All righty, let's move on to the comments of Mrs. Wiggins.
Mayor, members of council, I want to remind you that Monday, May the 31st, is Memorial Day, and all non-emergency offices will be closed. There will be a ceremony held here at City Hall at 10 o'clock, put on by the American Legion Post. The health van will begin coming back to the city on June the 16th, and will be continuing every third Wednesday of the month. They haven't been for several months, so we look forward to having them back. They'll be in the parking lot from 9:00 a.m. till noon. Remind you of the retreat that our council will have with the Planning Commission and the IDA on June the 14th. Will begin at 6:00 that night at the Yacht Club. And Kids Island will be reopening in the morning. We had the refurbishment taking place last Saturday with over 100 volunteers participating, and I want to express the appreciation of the city staff today and to all those members of council that were there, as well as the volunteers that were there to get this Kids Island back up and running. And so, I saw pictures of it today, and it looks beautiful. Congratulations to all that did that, and that's all I-
All right, Gene, thank you very much. But Seth Hall, any comments?
No, sir.
Okay.
Congratulations to, just a few. Congratulations, Gene, on your appointment. I would like to second the comments that Tom made relative to Carrie Freeman. He would also have been an excellent candidate, as likewise Frank Krieger. Three very good men.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Chris?
I would like to second Councilman Seth Hall's comments about Frank and Carrie. I did speak with everybody on this council, except for Gene, and everybody indicated to me they would be happy to vote for either Carrie or Frank, and I think that it would have been nice to have had a unanimous vote for vice mayor.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Tom?
Uh, yes. One of the things that I wanted to talk about a little bit was our favorite issue in town, trash and green bags. And one of the things that I asked for last week was, for the trash in town, we have a program here that we're not planning to transfer any money to. It needed $45,000 to be made whole. My question was basically, how much does the totes and the recycling and the hazardous waste cost, and how much does the bulky items pickup cost? And thanks to Teresa, she broke down the budget numbers for next year. And what's really interesting is, when we, we talk about the fund being broken, not being funded and needing money to come in, it's because the landscaping, the bulky waste pickup only brings in $19,000 a year, but when you add all of the costs in, and that's on the spreadsheet that we have here, when you add all of the costs in, it's $253,000 is what that costs us. We only bring in $19,000 for bulky waste, whereas on the totes program, that brings in $774,000, and the program itself only costs about $600,000. So, this is for the, what we were going to. So, I don't think we should be increasing the totes fees, because it's already carrying more than its fair share. And I've talked with some others, and I don't think we ought to be having a public hearing on increasing the totes fees if other people agree with that. You know, if, if we're not going to have the votes to go increase the tote fees, I don't think we ought to have the public hearing. And we ought to talk some about how to better, to better manage the program.
Let me just ask Teresa questions. Do we not have the funds in that program to carry us one year, the $45,000? Is that it? Yes, please. I guess my point is, Tom, if the, if the, if the dollars are there for one fiscal year-
Right.
Then, you know, we can address, it certainly needs to be addressed, and I think it's a concern of all of council, but if, if the money is there to take us for this fiscal year-
I think the money's there to take you through one fiscal year. I don't think you can go much further than that.
Right. But I mean, we have, we have time. We, we don't need to go forward with the totes fee. I think Tom and Gene both expressed some interest regarding the public hearing and whether or not that was absolutely necessary, given that I think the funds are there to resolve that issue.
Well, the only thing that that leaves is we would need to move money from the unappropriated fund balance-
That's correct.
-to balance the budget if we didn't do this.
Yes, that is correct.
From the budget, exactly.
To balance the budget out. So, we would have to make that commitment as a council, otherwise you didn't balance the budget.
It would be unbalanced, correct.
It would, would the-
That fund would be unbalanced.
Or you can bring it back to us without $45,000, and we can amend it.
We can amend that budget, yes.
Let me understand Gordon's question, because I'd talked earlier in the week with, last week with Randy. Right now, the, when we look at the budget book, under the solid waste fund, now each one of these, these funds are supposed to stand on their own, and this is an enterprise fund, that needs continual funding, which isn't in accordance to our guidelines, which is part of the problem. But it was my understanding that the solid waste fund shows assets of 235 or 285,000, of which a lot of it's equipment.
Yes, it is.
But it was my understanding that of that, about $45,000 or more was cash. Is that correct?
Um, there was $168,000 at the end of last year-
In cash?
-of, of, on, on designated fund balance, yes.
In the, in the solid waste fund?
$100,000 in cash, $168,000 in fund balance, which has some receivables and other things-
Right, it has some property and all that.
But $100,000 in cash, and this year, the cash, right now, the cash will most likely be somewhere around $65,000. There should be a decrease in cash at the end of this current fiscal year.
Right, and we were already planning to transfer, we were already planning to use 58,199 of the, the cash balance that's in that solid waste fund to start with, and what you're saying is, there's another 45,000 on top of it we could use this year, so we wouldn't have to increase the tote fund, and we wouldn't have to take, take anything out of the general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct, but part of the $58,000 is depreciation, which is a non-cash item.
Sure.
Okay, so, so it's about 75,000 in total, if you take the $30,000 of cash from the fund balance that we're using, as well as the 45 additional.
I understand, because of the, it's not cash accounting for our enterprise funds, it's also the accrual, partial accrual basis. Now, so we, we, if we didn't increase the tote fees, we wouldn't have to take any more out of the general fund balance, is that correct?
That's correct. You'd be taking it out of the net assets or the fund balance of that fund, and it has just enough.
The $45,000. We're looking for-
So that we don't have to revisit it. We balance the budget without-
Balance the budget.
Barring, barring our revenues coming in, expenses the way they're supposed to be, barring, you know, nothing happening during fiscal year 11, you won't have to revisit the general fund.
Like storms and those kinds of things.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, a storm, that's, that's not reimbursable or-
If I say even better, that means that we balance the budget without a tax increase and-
We're looking also to choose it as an RFP for fleet maintenance, correct?
That's correct, that is out there.
That could be savings there, perhaps.
Yes, and the general fund.
The general fund, which could also be used.
Yes, if we need it. If there is a savings in fiscal year 12, I think the RFP is for fiscal year 12 and beyond, so not for fiscal year 11.
Would we need a hearing to put a fee in for bulk item pickups?
For all bulk item, that-
So that the first one is not free anymore.
Right.
Same as with landscaping debris, that there'd be a cost for, you know, for both things.
If we could, I'd like to put that on the agenda, if there's agreement, to put that on the agenda for our next meeting, to look at adding a fee for the first item of bulky waste pickup, because from the budget, last calendar year, we had 1,887 pickups, and we estimate that if we were to charge the $30 for every bulky waste pickup, we would increase the fees we collect from $19,000 up by about $54,000.
That's if everybody-
If everybody, and they won't, so we wouldn't make quite that much. But again, really, the, the thing that strikes me is, what's broken here is, we're bringing in $19,000 to, to, to cover $253,000 in expenses, and I think the long-term way to fix this is to move the landscaping and bulky waste pickup to the general fund, excuse me, yeah, to the general fund, and have it funded by the general fund with real estate revenue, so people can write off the real estate revenue, I said, real estate taxes from their tax returns, and then decrease the totes fee, because we can decrease the totes fee by 23% and, and have that be a self-sustaining true enterprise fund. But I'd like to talk about that at the, the next meeting, if it'd be okay.
What I'd prefer to do, if it's okay with the other members of council, we have a off-site, and I think we had all discussed all of those possibilities, and I think we need to have some off-site time to discuss the way ahead, how we all see the way ahead, because at the end of the day, I think we're all of a consensus to get it into the taxes somehow, so that everybody can at least get the benefit of writing it off. The question there is, where do you stop? Do you do it with a sewer fee, and do you do it with everything else? And can you split it out so that lots that don't have homes on them, how do you handle those? So, it's a lot of complicated things. I'd like to see us talk about it, if the off-site is one of the issues, along with Dr. Flynn's suggestion on coastal areas.
You're talking about the off-site on June the 14th?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's even better, because that's before the next meeting. That's okay with others, I mean-
Instead of trying to bring it up to a vote real quick and-
No, I'm not trying to bring a vote here tonight, it's, I'm just putting it-
No, I'm talking about even on the 28th, I don't think we could do it.
That's good information, and we'll, we'll put it together, and we'll have it at the, have it to retreat, and we'll discuss it.
Well, basically, we don't have to look at an increase in tote fee-
No.
-for now, and that's good, because we didn't have the votes for that anyway, so.
Well, after we have this off-site conversation, I doubt we still bring it back up for a public hearing, because I think that would be good.
Yeah, but I think it would take staff some time to put it together.
Yeah, we probably won't see that for a couple of meetings, anyway, given we've only got one during the summer.
And there was a solid waste committee, once upon a time, I was on it, and one of the issues that they wanted to address was the bulk pickup, and they were told not to at that time, so we may want to consider inviting them.
I was, I was going to consider sending it back to them.
I think that would be good.
Well, without their, without their meeting, we did agree to put a first-time fee in for landscaping debris, because at one time, we had the first pickup was free for that, and then we changed it from $12 to $30.
I think our pickup cost on that stuff is just astronomical, as opposed to what is paid.
If, if you do the math, it comes out to an average of $135 a pickup, and we're only getting $30 for after the second pickup. As I said before, in our neighborhood, everybody uses their free pickup, and everybody adds to it, so that's why we only get $19,000.
Well, there's ways around everything, but I think originally, what we had this designed for was to make sure that the city of Pecosin stayed clean, which we have suffered before, and we still suffer, even with these free pickups, with some properties that are under standard, as far as just general cleanliness. So, it, it's a double-edged sword, and I would just say we need to take the time to consider, and that's why, I think, you're right, we did tell the trash committee not, because we were trying to get one thing taken care of, and I think we said, basically, we'd like to see them revisit this.
Well, you know, what'd be interesting would be, out of those 887 pickups last year for bulk items, how many occurred after the nor'easter, in that month and a half timeframe, or two-month timeframe, whatever it was?
Right.
I would, I would imagine 95% of them occurred that, during that time.
So, we're, I guess we're of general agreement not to have the hearing, that's, that's always really after, not to have the hearing on totes.
That's a lot of conflict with everyone, so.
Thank you. Well, I, I, it's not my neck off.
You're good.
Okay, two things.
Oh, you got something else?
Oh, yeah. Are you think Kids Island is going to go by without me saying?
You need to speak to that, that was-
I need to speak to that, and you need to help me, because you were, you were there, Mr. Mayor, earning your, your extra $10 a month, or whatever you get. I gotta say, you know, we heard it was 100 people, and it, it was amazing, the amount of mulch that was spread, and the things were done. You had the brownies planting flowers, you had the Cub Scouts there helping doing, you know, sanding with, with hand sand, with just sandpaper. You had the high schoolers there, the kids from the Leo Club, the Key Club, and that might have been almost half the people. You had 20 people from Langley come up, and some of them were really fired up to help the town, one of them was talking about doing a fundraiser and how they could get, since they're part of the military, they could get free materials for community service projects from Lowe's. It was, and, and I can't say enough, I mean, a lot of times, you go off and you do things, and, you know, there aren't all the surprise there, and I know I'm going to mess this up, because I'm going to miss people, but, so I, I won't. I'll just, I'll just say that the, the, the people who've always supported it have been there. The city staff had everything organized, they had equipment there. I mean, there was, when we say 100 people there, all those people were really busy for a couple hours, and you know how hard, how much planning you have to do to keep people busy for a couple hours, and we spread a whole lot of mulch, got a whole lot of things sanded and painted, and it is, it is going to reopen in the morning, and thank you very much, that is great news. And the parents were there, you had a lot of parents, of course, you had the Kiwanis Club, you had people from the Lions Club. I mean, it was, it was a really good community event, and there's going to be another cleanup in September, and I, and the one thought I have is, you know, when you do things like that, you, you really, you know, for me, at least, yeah, it was a couple hours' work, but it was a whole, you get a whole lot more out of doing it than, than you actually give. It was, it was a very good time, and I want to thank the city staff and all the people who, who really, really pulled that together. And then the final thing I have is, on license plates, we need 350 license plate commitments, and we're at 323 license plate commitments, so we're close. So, please, 327. 327, I'm getting hand signals from the back. I have 327 license plates, so we only need 23 more, and then we will have Pecosin license plates. Finney?
All right, sir.
Say, Finney.
Anything else?
Say, Finney.
Okay. All right. Carrie?
Yes, sir, I just wondered, on the FEMA waiver that we had talked about, that Doc brought up, do we know any more about that?
I, I don't-
Have we done anything?
What waiver?
The FEMA waiver.
Ken Summers had talked about last meeting, about having a meet, the public meeting?
There is a meeting, I think it's on June the 6th, June the 2nd, with FEMA, to talk about the FEMA maps, and they're looking at only technicalities, so street names, boundary lines, and, and things like that on the map at this time. They're not going into the zoning designations at this meeting, but it is still on for June 2nd, and the public is invited to attend.
Okay.
In addition to Kids Island, which was just a tremendous effort, a couple of weekends back, they did basically the same thing down at Swimming Pool, and then a couple of weekends prior to that, down at Mission Point Park. So we've got volunteers that just do good work everywhere and constantly, so wanted to point out those folks as well. Good work on the data you brought us on the garbage and bulk pickup. I think that was very helpful. And I just think, thank, well, congratulate Gene, and thank the rest of y'all for the good words, as you passed along, Frank, and that's all.
All right, Carrie, thank you. Frank?
Yeah, I apologize for missing the Kids Island thing. I was doing the site survey up at Ford's Colony on Saturday, and so I couldn't...
Site survey of a golf course?
Site survey of Ford's Colony. And the next thing is, in my remaining time on council, I hope we don't have to go through another election of a Vice Mayor, but congratulations to Gene also.
All right, thank you, Frank. Gene?
Well, I thank the four members that supported me in the run for Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor is basically, it's an honor to serve after having Roger Messier as a mentor, and also Bing Holloway, obviously. There were a couple of things, and I know the last few days for council have been excited, but since I wasn't part of those conversations, you know, I don't understand the civic participation comment, but I'll be happy to talk to anybody about my civic participation in the first time we built Kids Island. But I'll handle that outside of this chamber, and I will mention to everyone that there's no doubt that we have somewhat of a divided council. And we're going to do our best to redefine that. There is not a lot of conversation with at least two members, and we're going to fix that, so that they can feel a bigger part. That's all I've got.
I'd like to address that. There's a lot of conversation with me, just not with Gene. He has not spoken to me. It took him over a year to speak to me in this chamber, and I don't appreciate that implication that was made. And there's a difference between support and an unwillingness to go against.
Okay, other comments? Okay, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second.
Okay, Vic, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Seth Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Hesel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Vic. We are adjourned.
You're welcome.